Okay, and you will call this meeting of council to order for Thursday, September the 9th. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unseated lands of Pema. And also that it's a big day of this in my calendar.
There we go. Okay. And let's stand for the singing of "O Canada."
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love, it wars us coming. With bowing hearts we see the light, the true Lord strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, we're good, absent with regrets. Go ahead, deputy.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse councillor Cleveland.
Okay. Second by councillor Hatfield.
I'd just like to comment that he's special in his term of singing "O Canada."
Right? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. And approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? And we do have under additions, 14A, 305 Main demolition. Go ahead councillor Lesser.
Could I add Water Street on there as well?
Water Street?
Yeah.
So we're going to put Water Street under 14B. Any anything else? Okay, good. Motion to approve the agenda with the additions, please. Okay. Councillor Lesser, second by deputy mayor. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Approval of minutes, town council, August 19th, please. Moved by councillor Hatfield, second by deputy mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And the minutes from committee of the whole, August 26th, please. Moved by deputy mayor, second by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And we had a special town council meeting, August 26th. Can I have a motion for that one? Thank you councillor Lesser, second by deputy mayor. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. We have no public hearing this evening. Business arising? Any business arising? Anyone wanted to discuss out of the minutes? Good? Okay, new business. Noise bylaw. And the recommended motion there is that council pass first reading to repeal and replace the noise bylaw. Did anybody, go ahead CAO, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, just very quickly, this is part of our regular bylaw review process. In this case, the staff sergeant engaged quite well in this one. And so it was a fairly, fairly extensive repeal. Seemed like the right thing to do, repeal and replace. So the, one of the key things that this bylaw provides that we haven't had in the past is the ability to issue a permit for somebody to actually, you know, sort of set the bylaw aside for special events. And so we have instances occasionally where someone wants to have a small event with entertainment. Maybe it's at a private establishment and they're concerned about the noise bylaw. This allows the CAO to consider and either approve or deny that application. If it's denied, there is an appeal to council.
Good.
That's for your information.
Thank you. Any questions for the CAO on this one, or any discussion? Okay, can we have a motion? Councillor Lesser making that motion, seconded by the deputy mayor. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. 11B is the backyard fire bylaw. Go ahead, CAO.
So your worship, we discussed this at committee of the whole, a committee of the whole at some length. And as I indicated at that meeting, we've made a couple of changes as a result of those discussions. The attached map provides a 30-meter setback or buffer around the sensitive receptors. I don't believe we amended the sensitive receptor list. I'm looking at Lindsey. Nope, we didn't. And we did change the times. It was suggested that the times be changed so not before 7:00 PM Monday to Friday and not before 2:00 PM on weekends. So those are the changes that were made. And as I indicated at committee of the whole, this is your first reading. And if in the last two weeks, you've had some thoughts and ideas that you wanted to introduce here as amendments, you could make amendments at first reading and still go ahead and pass first reading, then the bylaw would be advertised and we would have second reading at next month's council meeting.
Okay. Good. Councillor Hatfield?
Thank you. I was, I looked at the 30-meter buffer that was presented to us. And I guess my question was, thinking back to last meeting when we took out the nursery schools because they would close at an earlier time during the day and would not be affected so much in the evening, is the purpose of really of having the schools in the buffer system? Because the schools are closed all summer. And as well, the few months in the spring, fall that you might have a fire, they would be out early as well, right? So I kind of just kind of looked at that in terms of whether, how much value there was in having a buffer around, around the schools being that there would be nobody in the schools during the fire burning season, campfire burning season. And so looking at all that, it really didn't leave us a lot of, if we took those out, there really isn't a lot of buffer left. And so I guess I'm now leaning to not having a buffer at all. So those are my comments.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Dairs?
Actually, I was just going to comment on the same thing about the nursery schools and the fact that we changed the times to accommodate that. So I'd have no, no argument with removing the buffer.
Thank you. Deputy?
I agree with councillor Hatfield. I don't think there should be a buffer. I think that makes it a little bit easier to enforce and as well, who can, who can't, everybody can that way. I think if we bring it in, we bring it in that everyone can enjoy them. And if not, we don't have to kind of pick and choose. I definitely understand why it was put in, but I support no buffer myself.
Go ahead councillor Lesser.
I'm going to jump on the bandwagon here and I'm going to say the same thing. I looked at that map when I first saw it and it actually looked way better than the other maps we saw. But there still were spots where I was looking and thinking, there could be one house in a neighborhood that couldn't. And I think that would potentially cause more problems. And knowing that we could always amend this if we found that there were issues, I would also say I'm in favor of having, having it without the buffers.
Well, I came in here thinking I was going to have to argue the point with all of you. So I'm, I'm in favor. If we're going to have fires, we're going to, I just think everybody should have the opportunity. And to councillor Lesser's point, you know, we can come back and revisit this if it's not working. We have that, we have that privilege. Actually, we have that responsibility, I should say, to take another look if it doesn't work. Hopefully, folks are respectful of their neighbors and, you know, this, this all happens in the best way so that everybody can have a fire. And I don't think that, you know, 3,000 homes in Yarmouth, they're all going to light up. So, go ahead councillor.
Yeah, I just want to, just a reminder to those who are listening, that you do have to have a permit to have a fire. And the permit can only be issued to the landowner so that if you are a rental, a renter, you would not be able to get a permit. That permit would have to go through the landlord if they so chose. So just to be aware of that.
So CAO, do you want to, do you want to explain the, the next step to this process? Because I don't want folks to think that.
Sure. So if, it sounds like council is unanimous on wanting to remove the sensitive receptors. That's the definition, the definition of the sub uses as well as section seven, which is, which is where the notwithstanding open air burning requirements, open air burning is not permitted, you know, within 30 meters of sensitive receptors. So that would come out. So a motion at this point to amend, to delete the definitions around sensitive receptors as well as section 7.0 be appropriate. Once that, once that amendment passes, and I think it will, then you have on the floor the amended, sorry, do you have a motion on the floor for first reading?
Well, we, I actually don't think we made the, we didn't make the motion.
So you should make a motion?
Yeah.
For first reading, then amend it?
Okay.
To delete those bits on the sensitive receptors?
Sure.
Then you've, then you've approved first reading. So to your question of what's the next step, well, the, the, the council is considering this bylaw amendment will be advertised and through our social media and in local paper. Anybody who has an opinion and wishes, wishes you to hear it can, can send you your correspondence. They can send official correspondence to the mayor and council. We'll receive it, place it on the next agenda. It doesn't require a public hearing as such, but I know it's customary, your worship, if somebody is here and they want to speak to something, you tend to be quite permissive in that way.
Yes.
So if somebody was present and they wanted to be heard in person?
Yeah.
That's, that's possible. If somebody wanted to be heard through electronic means, we can facilitate that if they give us advance notice. So once you have considered all the input you've received, it comes on the next agenda in October, the regular council meeting for second reading. If second reading passes, then, then you're done your work. Administration advertises the bylaw, advises the province. And once the ad appears in the local paper, then it is law in the town of Yarmouth.
Okay. All right. Councillor Dairs?
I'll make the motion and go to first reading.
Thank you. Second by councillor Lesser. Any more discussion? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to the amendments mentioned by the CAO.
Okay. Did you hear him?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. Good. Okay. So we're voting on the amendment first. Yeah. Councillor Hatfield, thank you. She did now. Okay, so we're voting, just so folks understand, we're voting on the amendment, okay? So any discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And then we are voting on, on the motion, the main motion, okay? Good. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Good. Wow. That's, I know, we've come a long way from Gills' motion. You can turn your light up too. Not that it does, I don't think it matters, mic's under control there. All right. 11C, land use bylaw enforcement policy. The recommended motion there is that council make no amendments to the land use bylaw enforcement policy as recommended by staff. There any, who wants to make that motion to get it on the floor? Okay, deputy mayor, second by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion? Questions or anything? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Emergency preparedness policy, and again, we're just, we're going through all of these policies because that's, we take on a few a year. That council make no amendments to the emergency preparedness policy as recommended by staff. And remember, the CAO is here. If anybody has any questions or concerns, I'm looking for a motion. Deputy mayor, thank you. Second by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion? Questions? Concerns? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Citizen advisory committees policy. That council amend the citizen advisory committees policy to include the communities in Bloom and planning advisory committee skills matrix for recruiting members. Go ahead councillor Hatfield.
Yeah, this, this is a motion that came from the communities of Bloom committee dated on September the 1st. And the motion is that the communities in Bloom committee recommends to council that they approve their recommended skills matrix that was submitted to everyone before the meeting.
Okay. Okay, moved by councillor Hatfield, seconded by deputy mayor. So, so just to be clear on this one, we're giving these, basically there's a matrix, but we are giving them, for example, to communities in Bloom to take a look at. We just did planning advisory this week as well. And we're rewriting them at our committees. That's, that's what's happening. Did you know that? Go ahead.
Yeah, so in an effort to, to make sure that our, that our committees are balanced in terms of background, in terms of, well, cultural background and so on, we, we have asked the committees to review a number of criteria and consider the needs of the individual committees so that we, when we go looking for people, we're hopefully attracting people that want to volunteer?
Exactly.
That really can make a contribution and a difference on the committees.
Yeah.
And, and I think we've been successful with that over the years, although for staff, frankly, it's, it's not as easy to, to define the types of people that, that would make the committee stronger. And so we're asking the committees to help us with that.
Yeah.
And so far, so good. We're getting, we're getting great feedback that will help us and help the committees in the future to, to select their successors.
It's, it's, it's really tremendously helpful and, and very, I'm going to ask you to chair both the airport, maybe just if you don't mind, a couple of things about how that worked. But, but we did it with the REN. I think that's the first time I saw it. I'm sure it existed before. But you end up with a team of people that, that cover all the avenues that, that you may come in contact with. So we were on councillor Hatfield, councillor Dairs and myself and on the PAC this week, and we went through it. And we realized, you know, we don't need A, B, and C, but we added a couple more, you know, just, I, I think we came up with a really great mix of exactly what we need for, for planning in the town. I see our planners back there shaking his head, right on Reese. Yeah, it was a, it was a really good conversation. And, and I actually think it even helps the committee understand exactly what the mandate is and, and what we're focused on. So it was, I really enjoyed that exercise. And I'm, I'm a huge fan of a matrix because, you know, anybody can sit on a committee, but this also gives us the ability to go out there. When you, when you see that you need, for example, legal, you, you know that there's people that you can go out there and speak with, right? Or, or leadership or community experts on A, B, and C. So it's a really great way to do things. Yeah, good. Were you going to, I, I put you on the spot, but you had a great story about the airport, which is.
Well, yeah. So in an effort to, to attract some quality candidates for the airport commission, one of the things that they did was develop a really good job description for those candidates. And so we've gone through the process of developing a skills matrix at that level. And it was really interesting. We got some really good, really good candidates and more than, than the positions that we could fill. And at the end of the day, one of the interesting things was that the elected officials sitting on that committee had all in the back of their minds, had already gone through the list of candidates. And it basically, without looking at the skills matrix, had chosen their first, second, and third choice. We sat down and went through the skills matrix with the entire committee. And what happened was that it validated our choices. And so we knew that we had the best people. And I'm really, really impressed with the fact that the skills matrix actually works. And I think it's important that, that people know that if there's six or seven or eight skills listed on the, on the skills matrix, it's not necessary that you hit every single one. It's, it, you may have somebody that has a background illegal, as the mayor indicated, that somebody else might have a financial background. For example, at the airport, at the airport commission, it's not necessary that you be a pilot or that you've managed an airport. But if you have a, a working knowledge of an airport, that might be something that, that is of value. And so the, the matrix doesn't, doesn't mean that you, you have to touch all the bases. It just means that you have something to bring to the table. And so I'm really pleased and, and I think you'll find that the, the candidates that have been nominated and have, I understand as of this week, have accepted the positions of the airport commission. I think everybody's going to be very pleased with the quality of candidates that surfaced.
Excellent. So it works. It's good news. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead.
Just before we move off that, thinking about the, the fact that the town has not identified anybody to occupy the three citizen positions on the recreation committee. And I don't believe there's a skills matrix that has been developed. I'm wondering if we could make a recommendation, because it's not an advisory committee of the town, it's a joint committee, if would be appropriate to make a motion to make a recommendation to the, the joint recreation committee that they develop a skills matrix that we could use. So I'd make that motion.
Can I ask a question? Can, could we as the three committee members sit down and do that? You're asking for the whole committee.
I, I think it's, probably has some value if, if the entire committee works on that skills matrix.
We're going to get some people on that soon.
We do. Yeah, we're, we're pretty lonely there.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So there's a motion on the floor around this committee. Oh, we already made that motion. And your motion is to.
It's a recommendation to the.
Recommendation to the joint. Okay, to the joint recreation, to develop a skills matrix. Okay, who seconds that? Good, thank you deputy. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, go ahead CAO.
Yeah, no, just for your awareness is that we did send the same generic skills matrix to Frank to consider.
Oh, okay.
So that, that motion will be, be welcome and get it on the agenda.
Good. Thank you. Okay, let's try that again. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks. Okay, smoking bylaw amendment, recommended motions that council make no amendments to the smoking bylaw as recommended by staff. Moved by the deputy mayor, second by councillor Hatfield. Go ahead CAO.
Yeah, this one, your worship, when this was reviewed, there was some discussion among staff about, you know, we've, we've been approached, council's been approached over the years around smoke-free places and, and different things. And there was some discussion about whether this was an opportunity to introduce some of those provisions, but we didn't want to surprise council with that. So you're just seeing the bylaw that, that prohibits smoking immediately adjacent to, to the schools within town. But I just, I just wanted to flag that for you is that the, the, the public health is always advocating for smoke-free places, smoke-free public places. And, you know, if that was something that you were interested in a presentation on or more information, we can, we can obtain that. But I didn't want to let this opportunity pass without raising it.
Good. Thank you. So are we good on this one? Anything else for the CAO? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Reports. Council advisory committees, that's you deputy, go ahead. Oh, hang on, I got to put you on there. Talk, talk right into it. Because we can't hear you.
Good to go. A recommended motion that council support the initiative by the chamber of commerce for their downtown placemaking project.
Second by councillor Dairs. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve first reading of the water supply upgrade lending program bylaw as recommended by staff.
Second. Why is this not under water utility? Second by councillor Hatfield.
So your worship, the reason this is not under water utility is because the loans would not be through the water utility. The loans would be directly through the town.
This was, yes.
These wells would not be part of the utility infrastructure.
These are the ones the deputy mayor brought up. I was thinking about the other program and we'll have to discuss them. Good. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
Recommended motion that Mayor Mood, councillor Dairs, councillor Hatfield meet quarterly with other municipal units of Detroit counties to discuss affordable housing.
Second by councillor Lesser. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve the budget adjustments as recommended by the director of finance.
Second. Second by councillor Hatfield. What do you think Jerry would say if we said no? Any discussion on that one? We have to say yes, he's so good, he's so good with our money. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
And this is one I'm very proud of. Recommended motion that council rename Alma Square to honor the late Jim McLeod.
Seconded by councillor Dairs. This, this one, this will go through, I'm sure. And then we will, I've already spoken with, with the family and we'll get together and, and see what that's going to look like. A lot of people are excited about that. Any discussion on that? Questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Planning advisory committee. Who else is on planning? Do you want to do those? Do you want planning? Councillor Hatfield? Or I can.
I can vote.
Yeah, just do the motions as a, just for Wade, in Wade's place.
The recommended motion was that council approve the attached letter from the planning advisory committee that provides feedback to the province of Nova Scotia on the recent coastal protection act regulations.
Thank you.
And that letter was prepared by our very able planner.
Planner extraordinaire. Did you get all you needed?
Go ahead.
Okay, good. Good stuff. Okay. You're going to second that councillor Lesser? You're looking at me like you wanted to. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks for that. Good stuff. Yep, go ahead councillor.
Recommended motion that council appoint Alvina Robichaud, Barb Rodney, Dave Sallos, Dave Warner, Jean Cluley, Debbie Nickerson, and Linda McCarthy-Wilson to the communities in Bloom committee.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion? Could I ask, do you, did you find a place for everybody? Because I know you said you had such great volunteers, you don't.
We did. We did.
Okay, good. Because my, my head was saying when I read it earlier, I thought, you know what? Maybe subcommittees if everybody can't or, you know, we can gather more people.
Yeah, no, we've been waiting a long time to, to do this. So I'm really happy to get this done tonight. In fact, I think Alvina's been waiting almost three years.
I know. She's been doing, every time I drive down the street, she's, she's working.
Yeah, yeah. And just to note, I mean, it's not part of the motion, but Amy Hilliard from Waste Check and Todd Muse from the, the town also sit on our committee as advisory and are a great asset to the committee.
Excellent. Good stuff. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Reports for information are attached. I'm sure you've taken a peek at those. Any questions for committee chairs? How are we doing on the 55 plus there councillor? There's one.
Yeah, I'll bring you up to speed because we're less than a week away from registration now. We have approximately seven, just over 700 people that are attending. And just to give you an idea how those numbers add up to, in comparison, I think Aniganish, which was centrally located in the province, had 700. So, we're right on par with Aniganish from two years ago. The last time the games were held here in Yarmouth was 2009, and the attendance at that time was 333, which gives you some idea of how good a job the YASTA and the crew have done making sure that these games could happen. And we didn't get the green light from the province, from the provincial board, until sometime in July because of COVID restrictions. So, you know, the planning that was going on behind the scenes and planning for COVID, we were very pleased to hear that the province is opening up next week. There will be, there are games themselves. I mean, a lot of people, I'll reiterate, I guess, is that these are games, not sports, although sports are involved. There's hockey and pickleball, which is extremely popular. There's, I think, over 130 pickleball players in that list. But it also includes, you know, non-sports-related games such as Scrabble and 45s and darts and other things. So, it's a wide range. There's 27, I believe, 27 locations throughout the county that are being used and including the pool in Clear. But it's going to be all over the county. We weren't able to plan an opening banquet, and so what's happened is they've developed a dine-around program, which I think is an extremely good idea. So, we're encouraging the participants that are coming to town to check out our local restaurants. And I think the restaurant owners have come up with some kind of a plan to provide them with some discounts. So, that's good as well. They have developed a questionnaire that will be circulated at the end of the games, and so people will be able to provide us with some feedback. I think that we'll also have an economic impact report that'll come out of this. And it's so nice because we haven't had visitors in this area for some time now. As everyone knows, with the cancellation of the ferry and with COVID, it's been difficult to fill hotel rooms. So, this is a very welcome event at this time, and we're looking really forward to hosting it. The games will take place Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of next week. And I think you'll see people out cycling and running, and there's just so many things going on. And I think it's really, really exciting to have this in the community at this time.
It is. Good stuff.
And once again, I'd just like to say that the folks at YASTA and the Yarmouth Recreation Department have done a fabulous idea, a fabulous job of pulling this all together with assistance from Mile East Productions.
Good stuff. I have a question for you too, but I'm gonna let you go ahead first.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Just a big shout out to Neil McKenzie. I'm on the committee as well. And Neil just kept the wheels going even when it wasn't a for sure. So, I don't think this would have happened without him pushing. And he's been a great leader through all this, and Rick at Mile East as well. So, I'm always happy when we put on a show because we always do well, no matter what it is. So, I think the people will come out and, you know, with COVID, kinda where we are with COVID now and people kinda wanting to be out, I think this is gonna be really great. So, looking forward to it.
I'm seeing a lot of people from away here now. They're literally vacationing here, which is great. So, yeah, we're excited about the 55 games. Deputy, I was gonna ask you to share a little bit of your excitement around the lights.
So, a little nostalgia for me, I can't lie. On Thursday, I received a text from Chad that said the lights at South End School were working. Anyone who knows, I've probably asked that question at every committee of the whole for the last two years. And Chad graciously lets me know and updates me. And I did actually a Facebook Live, and I walked over to the box and pushed the button in the sound when the lights came on, kinda brought me back to I was like 14 years old all over again. And it's been great. The kids at school talk about it every day. I was up there last night and watched 20 kids out there doing it. The first night, we had probably about 40 people. Don Berry graciously lent me some equipment from the high school, so I brought down some hockey nets. There was kids there playing. And yeah, it's just, it's a little bit of selfish pleasure there, but also really great to the community. So, thanks for the council before and the council sitting now for pushing that through. And I think the community, especially our youth, are really gonna get a lot of good use out of it. And kinda gives me chills even just talking about it. So, glad we're here and I don't have to ask Chad that question ever again, so.
It's, sometimes they seem like little things, but they're not. It's all about community building, right? They're huge things. I think I missed you the other night because I was there like 9:30, 10:00, and then you showed up at after 10:00. So, that's good. I have one more question, councillor Lesser. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you have, you have an accessibility conference coming up virtually. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know if there was a question more than just...
No, just to share a little bit about it if you, you know...
Yeah, we have a great article that Tina Camo put in the Vanguard. We're looking for people. I actually registered today. It's a pretty easy process. If you click the link on our website, the Town of Yarmouth website or Facebook, you can sign up. And we're looking for people from all walks of life to come, give their input on accessibility. So, not just people with accessibility issues or concerns, but we're looking for caregivers, parents, grandparents, youth, whatever can contribute so that we can make sure we get it right. And that's coming up on the 21st, I believe. Is that right?
Communications guy says yes. Good stuff. Councillor Dairs?
Yeah, did attend a Recreation Committee meeting last evening, and I just wanted to give a quick update on a couple of things. I guess one of the things is they've got two new staff persons out there that were hired in March of 2020. And as you can appreciate, there was a lockdown, I think, within a week of them being hired. So, they've had to learn the job remotely. And I can't say enough good about them, the work they've done. But a couple of things that came out of the committee last night. One is that there's never been, as far as everyone knows, there's never been a strategic plan for recreation. And I think there's an incentive on the part of the Recreation Director, Frank Grant, who would like to see that happen. This may be a good time to do it, and I think we can expect sometime in the near future a request from the, from the committee to, or from the town to share in, to cost share in that or approve the budget to have that strategic plan, a consultant hired to walk us through that strategic planning. And I think it's high time we did that. It is a good year because there's been a staff position that hasn't been filled. And so, there's some, I know it's, might be some juggling in the budget, but there's some money in the budget that hasn't been, hasn't been spent. So, it might be a good year to do it. Another thing that came out of the meeting last night, and I'm not gonna try and steal their thunder, but I think we're gonna see some exciting things happen along the active transportation corridor along the lake in the very near future. And I can tell you, I came here, gosh, it's been creeping up on 40 years ago. But I grew up in Dartmouth where they had many, a number of canoe clubs. And coming to Yarmouth, when I first saw the boat club and the lake, I thought, what a perfect place for a Sunday afternoon regatta. And so, there was some interest this year. There was a sprint, kayak sprint training going on in the lake, which was very well-attended. And so, people, they're now looking for some kayaks that can be used in competition. But that corridor, if it's developed, along with some of the improvements that are being planned for the boat club, will position Lake Milo very well for hosting regattas. And if you've ever been to a paddling regatta on a Sunday afternoon in the lake, it's a lot of fun. So, I think, as I say, I don't want to steal their thunder, but keep your eyes open in the next few weeks, hear some news from the municipality of Yarmouth.
Good stuff. Go ahead councillor Lesser.
Councillor Dairs, is there anything that you're able to share on what that might look like, or is that, we're waiting for them to? I'm just, I'm trying to figure out as I drive by what, how that, how that would be, I guess, built along the lake.
Yeah, I can't share a thing, only because I wouldn't want to steal their thunder. But also, I think they're dealing with environment and fisheries, and they have all those hoops to jump through. But I think within a few weeks, you'll see something tangible.
Good stuff. Okay, any other questions for committee chairs? Anything anyone wants to share? We're good? Okay, additions. 305 Main Street demolition. CAO, tell us what we're gonna get for our $25.
Okay, your worship, just to refresh everyone's memory, you know, our, we've had an ongoing file with 305 Main Street around on site Lee issues and roof issues and what have you. And this past spring, we had a complaint from a neighbor concerning the structural integrity that led us to engage Delmar Construction to assess the structural integrity of the building. Turns out that the building was, has been compromised from the inside, where structural elements were removed. It was also compromised from the outside where a roof had deteriorated to the point that there were no shingles or any roofing material whatsoever, and water was pouring into the, into the building and compromising the structure. So, the recommendation from the consultant, Delmar, was that the building was uneconomical to save and was a danger and should be, should be taken down. So, an order was issued on the owner of the building to demolish the building, and 30 days was provided. And within 30 days, there was no motion, no movement on behalf of the owner to see that occur. And so, the town has taken upon itself to now see that the building is demolished. We engaged Delmar Construction Limited to manage demolition, and they managed a tender process that led to seven potential companies being invited to participate. A few of them participated in a site visit, and in the end, only one bid was received, but from a very reputable and competent demolition company. And so, your worship, there's a motion for your consideration. I should say, the report from Delmar Construction outlining how the demolition will occur, all the steps and, I guess, the i's they've dotted and t's they've crossed, it's a very thorough report, is there for your consideration. The motion that is, has been recommended is that council accept the DCL recommendation and award the contract for demolition at 305 Main Street to Verhagen Demolition in the amount of $242,000. That's plus HST, I should say. And allocate a budget of $440,000 total to complete the demolition project. And so, within the report itself, it breaks down where the other costs are. They include things like disposal of the waste and so on. So, your worship, our town engineer has been working with Delmar Construction on, through this process, and this was his recommendation. So, we have it, we have it for you tonight. He's also here if you have any questions of a technical nature that clearly would be above my skill and knowledge level.
Good. Thank you. Councillor Lesser?
I'm in favor of this motion, but I'm just wondering, the motion says demolition of 305, and when you read the documents, it does refer to 305, meaning 305 to 309. But I don't know if the motion, is the motion sufficient to just say 305, or should it have the rest?
Good. Councillor Dairs?
I'd just like to make that motion. It's very unfortunate, but very necessary, so.
Good. So, moved. Who wants to second that? Councillor Lesser. Seconded by councillor Lesser. Go ahead, deputy.
Just for those who are watching, this is all available online, the full report, which is very thorough, as the CAO said. And we didn't arrive here easily. We tried to give work together. No one wants to see a hole in the center of downtown, but it comes down to safety. Obviously, if you look at the report, you understand why we're going through what we are. And I'm sure we are here, but we are, and, you know, for safety reasons, we have to do what we have to do.
Exactly. Okay. Anything else, anyone? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Water Street. Councillor Lesser?
This isn't anything major, but you can probably guess what I'm gonna bring up about Water Street, maybe. Crosswalks. There's, I was actually, I was going home at lunchtime, or just after lunch today to get my bank carrots, and when I got by the police station, the trail that comes, like the ATV trail that comes down behind Tim Hortons that people walk on, that goes behind the police station and then cuts across to the other really nice sidewalk we have on the other side that brings you by the, like the Milton Clock monument and that. There's no way to get across the street in that spot. I know, you know, we keep, I keep bringing up sidewalks and crosswalks. But when I looked at it today and learning what I've learned in the last year about sightlines and that kind of thing, it seems, it seems like an easier one to do. And I'm not sure, like, I know we still don't have a lot of crosswalks. We're adding one on Brown Street or the end of Brown Street. But I'm wondering if that would make sense to get people, like, we're promoting active transportation and people walking the trails. And I stopped today, the reason I stopped today was there was a bike there that wanted to cross, and it seemed like a natural thing to stop as somebody's standing on the side of the road, but there was not a crosswalk. So, I'm just wondering about the possibility of getting staff to explore that possibility.
Councillor Hatfield?
Yeah, it's interesting you bring that up councillor Lesser, because I was just walking across in that exact same spot yesterday with a little two-year-old in my arms, running across the road because there was no crosswalk there. And it is kind of a natural progression of that, of that trail. So, I would support having the town at least look at the possibilities, you know, the feasibility of that.
Go ahead.
I guess I'll make a motion if we could ask staff to explore the idea of putting a crosswalk in that location. I don't know if you need more details for the motion, but the spot is to connect the trail to the sidewalk on the west side of, I guess, right?
So, it's the south side of the RCMP property?
Yes, south side of the RCMP, yes.
I know I walked it today, and I stepped back because it's, is it not illegal to just stop for people on a street without a crosswalk? Maybe not.
I don't know if it's illegal. It's not encouraged.
It's not, certainly not encouraged. Like, so, right, it's just not encouraged. So, I always stay far back until it's clear because I don't want somebody stopping and then get rear-ended or something. So, yeah.
I guess that's why I thought of it today, because it seemed like the friendly thing to do, which we try to do in this end of the province and this end part of the world. But I also thought, I'm not sure if I was supposed to be stopping in this spot, but there was a man waiting to go across on a bike, and it just seemed natural that, it seemed like there should have been a crosswalk there. So, I mean, whatever the report comes back as, I just, I think it'd be good to look into it.
I didn't mean you shouldn't stop, because I stopped too. It's, you're right. It's exactly who we are. People get shocked when we do it, but it's who we are. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the only thing is, the only thing you really have to consider is if there's traffic coming in the other direction.
Yeah, definitely.
Because, you know, you can't, you can't think for them.
You can't, you can't make both people stop.
Typically, crosswalks are contraindicated in the center of a street where it doesn't have an intersection unless there's a mitigating factor, and I think in this case, there may be.
Yeah, before we vote on this, let me just, let me just ask this question, because I just walked it today. You saw, you saw me down there with the dog. So, you come in behind the police station, and then we, you kinda cut around that fence and come along. But there's, there's also a tra, a little bit of a trail there that the ATVers have been using. It's, it is a mess. But here's the other question that maybe could be considered, because that gets you just about to Tim Hortons. And how many people from Tim Hortons walk across the street to that little, right? So, maybe one of those two. I don't, I don't know if that's, you know what I mean? Like, it just, there's two spots there that people are scooting across.
Yeah, I think any of those spots, I, I know, I seem like I'm promoting crosswalks. I don't, I don't have any investments in any, there's no conflict of interest. But today, I was not planning on bringing any more up in the next three years, but this one kinda struck me as, it seems like that part of Water Street, there isn't a way to get over there to a spot that is probably one of the nicest spots in Yarmouth and with the yellow benches there. And it just seems like a natural spot to have something, some way of getting across. And it is true that Tim Hortons at night, you have, a lot of the bikers are sitting there, and they bring out their lawn chairs. And I think they would, you know, I think they would appreciate a way to get across the street as well. But I also understand that crosswalks are more complicated than just painting lines. So, whatever the report says, I would be, I would obviously be in favor of, but I'd like to see at least a look at it.
Good. Okay, so, who seconded that? Okay, councillor Hatfield. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of invoices? Thank you, deputy. Seconded by councillor Hatfield. Any more discussion? Good, because I signed them. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Did we have anything in camera? We didn't. Okay, so I'll say this before we sign off. So I'll say this before we sign off. Voting opened today. It goes to the 18th. If somebody didn't, so that's for the municipal election where, excuse me, we're filling councillor McLeod's seat. And you should have gotten your information in the mail by now, I would suggest. And if you haven't, then you just call, call the returning officer and, and just make sure you vote. We want a full complement team here. And, and that voting started today and it ends on the 18th, I believe. And it's, it's by telephone, it's over the internet. And then is there a election day downstairs? And then election day, you can come vote at Town Hall.
Come at the returning office and get assistance at, at any time, I think is what I had read online.
He's, he's there and that's the, is the back door still locked? It's open? Okay, so the, the back door at Town Hall, you can come in if you have any issues or you need anything. But let's get out there and vote, it's your democratic right. And the date of the next meeting is October the 14th. That gives us three days to get out of our turkey coma. And move on. Okay. So motion to adjourn, folks.